Stand for the pledge.
I put your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. April, could you let the record show we are all present?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll support.
Motion support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. I have nothing to add or delete. Does anyone have anything they want?
I'll move the approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to announcements and communications.
Oh, maybe I should mention that December 1st, I sent out that love note that I send you twice a year. So if you have not received your tax bill, please call my office so that we can get you a duplicate out in the mail. But please come pay your taxes. We love to see your face. But we have a drop box. It can be by United States Postal Service. You can pay online. Or again, you can come see us. We'd be happy to service you. So anyways.
Thinking with that announcement, you're going to get a whole bunch of phone calls begging you to come.
I hope they come. We'd love to see everybody.
All right, we're going to close that out, and we're going to go to call the public. This is when you can come up and talk about non-agenda related items. And give your name and address for the record. Okay, that's a quick one. She has none. We're going to close that out and go to reports. Our first report is Amy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a few updates since our last meeting. We have been working on updating our available property listing within the DDA district. So I'm working with some of the local realtors and building owners to get that document updated. So if any potential business owners are looking to move into the area, I make that available to them. I had the opportunity to meet with some other Main Street Oakland County communities. We have a South by Southwest group that meets, which is Highland, Wicksum, South Lyon, and Lyon Township. We try to do at least one event with each other once a year. Last year, in February, we did the Burger Wars, which we had five participating businesses from Lyon Township in there. And this year, we're looking for an event in February called the Poor Wars. So we'll be doing highlighting places and businesses that do drinks, whether they're cocktails, cocktails, coffee drinks. So we're going to be looking for some businesses to participate in all those communities and giving out some awards for the top three vote getters. I had the opportunity to attend the Hudson Towns ribbon cutting event. They have some great units that are available there. We toured the facility. Puts out some reel on our social media with a virtual tour of them. But they still have openings. So if you know of anybody looking for a location in Lyon Township, they have units available. Also had the opportunity to attend our Economic Vitality Networking Event last month. That was held at Reyes Coca-Cola bottling. We had over 30 people attend. And they were gracious enough at the end of that event to do a tour of their facility for all those that wanted to stick around. We had probably about 10 people take part in that tour again. So we were very excited that they were willing to host. And we have been working with our DPW to do our installation of our holiday light display over at Inspiration Park. Because of the last minute weather, we're a little bit behind. We are hoping to be opened up tonight. Some of the lights will be up tonight, but we'll have the remainder of them set in place by tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest. That runs all through the month of December. Between or after dusk, the lights come on, so you can feel free to take your families down there, do pictures, photo ops. And on the 22nd of November, we had our Giving on the Grand, where we invited the community out to come and help us put up that display. And we had about 20 to 30 volunteers that attended. We're extremely thankful to the South Lyon High Schools that brought in a lot of students to help us out that night. Other than that, we've been working hard on our lighting up the grand event that will be taking place next weekend on December 13th. We have all day full of activities. We're doing a holiday market from 11 to 4:00. We have our tubing slide coming out again. That'll be on Wall Street, so that street will be closed. That'll be from 2:00 to 7:00. Mission Church will be holding live music. They'll have a coffee truck available. And then we'll be doing activities over at New Hudson United Methodist Church from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the tree lighting will be at about 6:10 p.m., which will be kicking off with a performance from V School of Dance again this year. So we'll have again hot cocoa smores available. We have balloon artists, face painting, visits with Santa. Some local businesses will be hosting their own events that night, too. So please get out in the community and visit us over at Inspiration Park that day or stop by one of our businesses downtown. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to fire chief, Madeline.
Good evening. I'll wait today. So for my report this month, fire prevention for the month of November did 42 inspections totaling just over 2.2 million square feet, bringing our year-to-date total of 291 inspections at just over 19.7 million square feet. On average, month of November, our firefighters trained 11 hours a month, or 11 hours per person. This month, they'll be focusing on their basic life support skills and their CPR annual refresher and update. This time, we are up 84 calls from this time last year. In '24, we were at 1,749 calls for service. This year, we're at 1,833. Last thing I've got on my agenda tonight is I'd like to introduce Jim Coomer, our new fire marshal, and his daughter Taylor. I've got them are coming up to pin his badge on. Coomer comes from, he's got over 40 years in the fire service, so he's got plenty of experience. And his last role was the fire chief of Walt Lake. So I'll leave it to his daughter Taylor to go ahead and pin the badge on. That was quick. That concludes my report. Any questions?
That's a good report.
Thank you.
Welcome to the township, James.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to having a great relationship with you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Lieutenant.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Got a couple of quick updates for you. We got some new personnel assignments. We're losing Detective Jennifer Whiting. She's been promoted to sergeant. All right, she'll be starting her new role this Saturday. As a replacement for her, we'll be getting Detective Gene Haddable. He's a good guy, 17, 18 years. I think he'll add a lot of value to the substation. And once we get all of our new people settled in, because we have a couple of new faces, I'll bring them up and introduce you all to them. So they know who the bosses are, right? But in addition to that change or exchange, one of our afternoon guys, Logan Lynch, he's going to the government agency. He's going to work for ICE, so we'll be back to being short three on noons and two on days. But there's hope in sight. We have 19 new recruits coming out of the police academy. So I'm hoping to stake a claim on a couple of those for Lyon Township. And I'm being told there is another 30 going in right after that, so. One of these days, we may get back to being fully staffed without overtime. It'd be nice to have people that are in the township day after day and not just forced here to fill a spot, right? The coach for the cold end of today, we did a good job department-wide. We raised a lot of coats for the public, so that's always a good thing. Shop for the heroes is upon us. We've raised approximately $5,000 so far from the sheriff's office, but there's still a couple more weeks left. So I'll have a final tally for you as we get closer to that. And I'll let you guys know what we're dealing with as far as the number of kids we can support. I'm projecting around 75 to 100 as usual, with a couple hundred bucks for each kid. It's always a good thing. And the last order of business for me is an update regarding the destruction to township property, those two juveniles. They, the court did authorize petitions, which is like a warrant for juvenile, which for felony charges against those two individuals. So it's for MDoP, $1,000 to less than $20,000. So they have some felony charges. They and their families have some felony charges to deal with. As it goes through the court process, we'll get a little bit closer to figuring out what, if any restitution is ordered, so the township can recoup some of that money for the damages. And that concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So Lieutenant, they're going to hit them with felony charges on kids?
Yes, they committed felony offenses, sir.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, they're.
For a young kid?
Yeah, well, there are still some legal things that could be done. And I would have to call down and figure out what the process is, but just to get an update. But I mean, they did some pretty severe damage, too. Some expensive stuff.
They're young kids, and I'd hate to see them, you know.
Yeah. Well, I mean, well, we'll talk a little bit about offline. Yeah, we'll talk offline. Does anyone else have any questions for me?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lieutenant. We're going to move on to the planning commission.
Yes, we had our meeting on Monday, November 10th. And we did hold a public hearing on the, it's the export corporation for special land use because they're in our Wellhead Protection Overlay District. And that's the curtain building that's on Grand River, that Walbridge built. And they're going to be occupying that. They're actually, they're like a warehouse for automotive parts. So we're looking forward to that. It's on our agenda tonight. But we also had, under old business, we had the Magna Storage Building Site Plan Review. And I think they had, let me flip my page here. And their special land use, which was recommended by the Planning Commission to the Township Board with approval, and they approved the site plan. So that's also on our agenda tonight. And then under new business, we had, and that's for their storage building, that they're going to hide those racks in. So it's going to be very nice for them and us to get that cleaned up. And then under new business, we had Lot 35 over here in Lyon Crossing, kind of by Zeal Credit Union. They just asked for an extension for their site plan approval, and that was granted by the Planning Commission. So that concludes my report. If anybody has any questions.
Was that their first extension?
Yes. So originally approved in 2023 for one year, and then approved in, I'm sorry, second, yes. So we extended it. So, yep. Yep. They're also looking for funding that was there to build their building. So that's my report.
Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Yep, no problem.
Lisa, anything from the ZBA?
Well, it's a Christmas miracle. We had two cases on the November 17th agenda. We started with three, but we did end up postponing one of them. And the other two items were both unanimously denied. And then December 15th, we have two cases. 6 o'clock, very, very interesting.
What were the cases? Were they late?
One was for an additional sign on Coca-Cola Reyes Building. And then the other one was for brick exterior at the mini warehouse. So the requirement for brick exterior facing a main road.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that was the storage.
Yeah.
You denied that?
Yes. It failed to meet any of the five requirements. And as a note, like, one of the big issues, I don't know if that could be conveyed to, at some level, but some of the ZBA members, including myself, were not too pleased that the case for the Coca-Cola Reyes for their second sign, nobody from Coca-Cola showed up. It was just the sign, the sign guy. So it was commented by a couple of members that it put, it put this man in a sticky situation because he's trying to explain the rationale for the request for the variance, but he wasn't really the applicant. He was just the guy who was going to design the sign.
We don't like that at the Planning Commission.
Oh, I know.
We do not.
I remember that. So it was.
Well, they should have come.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, they should.
But I mean, overall, they didn't, we came to some suggestions for them, and hopefully they'll take that back and won't have a need for a variance.
All right, well, thank you, Lisa. Moving on to the building department, Tony.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we just, it's business as usual for the most part. We do have a few fairly noteworthy items. And one of them is what Patty mentioned, the proposed facility at 54363 Grand River, Lyon Distribution Center. It's going to be, Trevor here, we're going to be walking the building tomorrow as a preliminary, go over his life safety plan and things like that. There's architect submitted. Going to be our first site walk with our new fire marshal, who I met today, had the pleasure of meeting today. And with our existing fire marshal, kind of, I don't know, I don't want to use the word outgoing. But with Bruce as well. So we're going to walk that tomorrow. Should be interesting. And I mean, well, also routine, I'll say that. We also have a Consumers Energy Natural Gas Refinement Facility. It's, we're under, the plan review for the construction drawings is underway. And that's at 22675 Griswold. And there's another facility, we are in the process of performing plan reviews of the construction drawings. And that's a light manufacturing, machining, machining, assembly, and automotive parts fabrication facility at 30180 Research Drive, a company called, we call it QX for short. I think it's pronounced Quanzing. So just a few new facilities coming into town, and that's all I have.
That's good stuff, Tony. Anybody have any questions for Tony? All right, the water department, we are just kind of in a holding pattern right now with the Thanksgiving holidays. We haven't got a lot completed on that. It is moving along, but very slow pace, a lot slower than I'd like it to be. But everything's working well. It's just we got to get this plan online. Does anyone have anything they want to talk about on that? Okay. Well, we're going to close the reports, and we're going to move to public hearings. We have two tonight. Our first one is a public hearing that we hold every year for the 2026 budget. And we're going to open the public hearing at 6:17. And basically, if you want to come up and just ask questions about the budget or how it's done, or any questions you have at all, that's what we're here for with this public hearing. No one would like to come up and talk about it, then we're going to close it. So we're going to close it at 6:17. Our second public hearing is a community development block grant. And I'm going to have, I'm going to have Brian go ahead and talk about that a little bit, just to put it on the record to let everyone know what it is and we'll do one tonight. Brian, you want to go ahead and explain that?
Yeah, absolutely. So every year, the federal government allocates funding for the community development block grant, and they have a pretty wide variety of things that they are intending to do with that money. But first and foremost is serving low-income residents with particular services. But then that money can also be spread across things like public services, infrastructure improvements, things like that. In the past, your township has received anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 as their allocation as part of the Greater Oakland County CDBG program. This year, Oakland County chose to modify their program a little bit. So for the most part, we're going to be doing competitive bids of projects against the other communities in Oakland County. And so one of the things that we thought met some of the criteria for CDBG goals was the Hawk Signal across Pontiac Trail on the north side of the township. I have some comments in my memo to the township board, but in keeping with the theme of addressing some of the needs of, one, your lower-income residents who may not have a vehicle, but, two, Oakland County's larger goals of connectivity for non-motorized transportation, I think that that project fits. So I have the total project cost that was estimated based in May 2024 from CES of $231,566.88. Robert, you asked me before the meeting if I had applied an inflation factor on that amount. I did not. That's the estimate from May of '24. So if it's, if it's something that you'd like to do, we could, we could request an inflated, an inflation-based increase on that amount to Oakland County. We don't have a limit to the ask for the project. They're all, they're doing these evaluations based on the merits of the project. So it can be pretty substantial. The other project that I'm proposing that the township continue to do, you've in the past allocated $3,500 to Haven, which is domestic abuse, family assistance. And we can continue to propose that $3,500. So there is a cap on that, which is why that's so small in comparison to the larger number. But so the total ask that I have in the resolution that's in front of you is $235,066.88. If you choose to modify that, that's okay. We are, we have a deadline for submission to Oakland County the end of this week. So we have the majority of that application prepared. We'll have a couple of items for John to sign if you wanted to move forward with this, and we'll get that submitted.
Okay.
I guess the last item of interest is that you'll note that in your, your budget for the township, this item is listed in there as a line item. Of course, if the county chooses not to fund this, you'll have the opportunity to, to construct that or not under the other funding sources that you have available. But that's why it's in the township budget.
Okay. So everyone understands the funds. Okay, so that being said, I'm going to open it up for a public hearing at 6:21. And anyone from the public would like to come up and ask any questions about the block grant?
Hey, John, we all received a letter from Michael in Beverly, Jokanen. Do we want to read that into the record as, so do you want me to summarize that Mr. and Mrs. Jokanen, who live on Deer Creek Drive, would like to see CDBG funds dedicated to green spaces in the township and have concerns about new development and hard surfaces, and had recommended the corner of Pontiac Trail and Silver Lake Road as a potential location for Green Space Park. And I don't know that we can use CDBG funds for a park. I mean, it's not a bad idea, but I don't know that we can. Is that a possibility?
There are some recreational facility opportunities as, as projects. However, those that aren't connected to other facilities are not necessarily an area of interest of Oakland County at this point.
Would it be for land acquisition or simply development of like park improvements?
You could do either.
Oh, you can. Okay. Obviously, between now and Friday, we don't have enough time to really process this probably for this cycle. But that could be something we would be able to consider. And obviously, Oakland County Parks System and Fund has significant, like the Transportation Fund has significant revenue. So, you know, perhaps it'd be something we could look at in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So anyone else want to come on up? All right, see, nobody. We're going to close the public hearing at 6:23. And we're going to move on. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we, first item is to consider approval of the Magna Storage Building's special land use. And on this one, I would just like to start out by saying that this is a special land use on the Wellhead Protection Plan. And it's just, you know, us okay, they don't know all this, but I'd like to, I'd like to reiterate it a bit that it's about chemicals going into the ground from Magna that could impact our aquifer. And Magna's an existing building, and they've been there, and they're not really changing anything that they're doing other than making a storage building in the rear so they can put the racks that are, that we've been getting a lot of complaints about with the outdoor storage. So that being said, I mean, I just want to set the table for what this is. And that being said, it's open for conversation, but I would suggest we approve this for them.
It's pretty straightforward. The only thing I had, John, I wanted to say is that I want to thank Patty and Commissioners Chuck and Pennington for bringing up screening, because that's always an issue, and it's a high-profile corner. And it looks like through the discussion, reading the minutes, that a significant number of plantings have been added to kind of screen off some of this area of taller species, double rows of landscaping. And I just, I have no objection to this, but I wanted to point out the fact that Planning Commission brought this up and that the applicant seemed to be very agreeable to doing what was asked of them by the Planning Commission.
Yeah, they were very agreeable.
Yeah.
Yep. It's going to be nice when they get it done.
It's going to be a big improvement to the township.
It will.
And this is all going on existing pavement. Right, there's now, they did some stuff, so that's a bonus.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll move the approval of special land use for Magna Storage Building, AP 25-71B, subject to all the review comments and the comments and conditions attached to this approval by the Planning Commission.
I'll support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks. We're going to move to item B, to consider the approval of Export Corporation's special land use. Again, this is about our Wellhead Protection Plan. I'm kind of excited to see that the large building is finally getting a use.
Yeah.
Which is really awesome. And I think this has already been through the Planning Commission, and it's been approved. So now it's up to us to see if we agree that it's not going to impact our aquifer.
And they're using the whole building, which I know Walbridge really appreciated, and so do we. It's going to be a nice business there.
And a low-traffic user, too. I know that's always a concern, so.
So anybody want to talk more about it or make a motion?
I'll move the approval of the special land use for Export Corporation, AP 25-77, subject to all review comments and any conditions imposed by the Planning Commission.
I'll support.
A motion support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Thank you, guys. All right, now we're going to move on to my favorite time of the year. Well, as everyone I hope knows on this board, I don't have people knocking my doors down to serve on these boards.
They don't know how much fun it is.
So I end up, and I'll tell you, I am very proud of the boards we do have. I mean, these, these guys have been coming for years and years and years. And I, I just would like to get them all appointed again. And actually, there's a few of them that we still have room. We have room on boards to add some people. Some of these alternates are jumping in to take the, take the slack until we find people. So we still have board members we need, so.
Friends and family. We need, we need people to serve.
So I'm just asking you to approve these on for however long you guys would like to do it. I mean, it's the board review, and the ZBA is a one-year, I believe, right? And we have to redo them every year. The others are staggered years, but since there's been no new people getting engaged here. Now that I have help, actually, I'm going to put her on and try to get this thing straightened out. And, you know, maybe stagger the years so that if we do have new people coming, we can stagger them.
I'll wait till we get to the Planning Commission, but that was basically the comment I was going to make.
Yeah. So, yeah, well, I knew it. Again, you know, it's just.
I know.
To stagger them is one thing, but to not have anyone new ever coming in is another. There's no reason to stagger them. It's been a tough, it's been tough getting these boards filled. We have another board, actually, that we're going to have to fill. And yeah, in Tony's, we have a board of construction that we have to fill. And we've got some people on board. We just are trying to figure out where we're at. And I think we talked to Carol a little bit about it, on if the resolution we had would be appropriate to move it forward. And we'll have to talk to you about that again.
Yeah, I don't recall.
We'll get Tony involved in that. He knows what he needs for that.
You do need to have your construction.
Yes, we do. And he's on top of it. So we'll get that, we'll prioritize that.
He's got the members also.
Yeah, he already has some people that are interested, so that was a good thing. So we, we'll get that moving forward very quickly. So it's up to you guys. If you want to move these right down and approve these, I'd be happy.
John, I have a question. When I'm looking at the online, what's that?
I'm joking.
When I'm looking at the online packet, E has disappeared.
Yeah, I know. It didn't, is that what you called them on?
Uh, yeah, but it was on. It looks like it.
Catherine was, was going to make this direction.
I think they put it back in.
Did she?
No, it's not there. It's just E and F.
I think it just got shifted down to F.
I think, yeah.
Planning Commission is now F. Planning Commission is now F. It just got moved to F, so it says CDF. It skips E.
It got messed up a little bit, tried to put them all.
We'll fix it.
Catherine.
Content is there, the lettering is just off.
They were the same.
Yeah, but our, isn't it just?
Two of them were the same, that's why. Yep.
Did you find it?
No, C is Planning Board of Review, D is DDA, there is no E, and then there's Planning Commission.
You wanna?
I already know what they are.
Oh, yeah, there is no ZBA.
But there is no ZBA online.
Sheet is missing. Okay, that's, I see now. Okay.
So does, does it have to be?
We'll put it online. We'll, we'll let them know it was missing.
So I have, I have, oh, E is missing from there, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
John, I do wanna point out, too, your Board of Review could be appointed for two years.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Great.
We could do that. I thought they had to renew every year.
No, they could be every, every other year.
'Cause we've been doing that every year.
Question is, do they know that and wanna do it for two?
Yeah. I've already got one on there that I'm gonna have to get replaced.
Well, maybe, maybe you start staggering. If that's true, appoint him for one and the other for two or something like that.
Huh? After we get this done this year, I'm gonna have Rebecca work on this and stagger things, and we're gonna get people in, and we're gonna try to work it out, but.
We have a game win.
Yeah, I haven't had time to do it myself, but I do have a helper now, so it's great. Well, you guys wanna go ahead and just put these all on for a year, and we'll figure it out this year?
Yep.
I mean, we, I don't mind if we put them all on for a year.
Yeah.
Is that not okay with you?
You want separate motions, though?
I think we, do we have to separate?
Probably, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the supervisor's matrix for Board of Review for one year.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
DDA, it looks like, is already staggered, so do we wanna do that one as?
Amy's been on top of that, so this one we can.
So we wanna do that one as is?
Yeah, if you could, please.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the supervisor's appointment matrix for the DDA.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the approval of the zoning Board of Appeals.
I'd like to make a motion to approve supervisor's appointment to do the zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we have the approval of the appointment of the Planning Commission.
This is where I guess I have a question to Carol, where if, because, if we did want to start staggering Planning Commission, would it be better to do a one-year thing now and then start the staggering? 'Cause I don't think we can un, like, if we appoint someone to a three-year term now and then we say we wanna start staggering, do we have to wait until the end of that three years?
I'd just like to keep them on one year.
I would just keep it as is and then take the time to figure out who you're gonna start staggering now.
Okay, so as, as one year, not as is? 'Cause it's writ, it was written as three, but.
As three, yes.
So we'll just do it as one?
No, do it as three.
John wants to do it as, John wants to do it as one.
Well, I was thinking it'd give us a chance to stagger, but then we'll have to bring it back next year.
Yeah.
Or just, or just.
I guess I'm just saying, like, are we allowed to, like, if we set them all as three right now, are we allowed to then next year say, okay, these ones, never mind, it's not actually ending this?
There's six, so if you give two one-year terms, two two-year terms, and two three-year terms, if you wanna do it now, John.
Just do it now like that.
That would, that would work.
And now you've staggered them, and then you reappoint them next year or whatever.
Do we care which ones go into which bucket?
No.
Well, probably, Mike, you wanna do for three.
Okay. So let's just, yeah, go down the, go down the list, and I'll, I'll say, I'll make a motion to approve the supervisor's appointment matrix to the Planning Commission with terms ending in twenty-twenty-eight for Mike Conflied and Carl Towne, twenty-twenty-seven for Kurt Radke and Jim Chuck, and twenty-twenty-six for Ron Pennington and Bronco Metkowski, unless you wanna change any of those. I just went down the list.
I support.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion to support. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, guys. Okay, we're gonna move on to the budget amendments. Uh, we only had three, and I think everybody knows about them. These were all, the light, the street lighting was the only one that, uh, you know, we added a bunch more streetlights, and that's why that moved up so much.
Yeah.
Captain Puma was a property, and assessing, you know, that was the three we had.
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five General Fund Budget Amendments of December first, twenty-twenty-five, as presented.
I'll support. Please, I support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Now we're gonna move on to consideration to approve the twenty-twenty-six budget. Anybody have any questions on that? And we, did we, were we able to answer them all? Do we have any more questions?
Just, just one, I, I, you can just answer it, but like, we were looking at, um, I saw it in the General Fund that the administrative fees that we had talked about were all, now they're from all the departments. Um, but those then, do those have to be reflected in each department's budget as well? I guess I didn't look.
We did. And, and, and I did write to the library, and I did tell Reggie.
Okay.
Those were the only two that we moved.
Okay.
So, yes, so.
Everything's.
Everything's the same. They're all forty-five thousand dollars, which I, is good.
Okay.
We do a lot of work that.
Yeah.
People really don't know. It's not like just writing a check. It, it's, it's a lot of work, more than what people think, you know? So anyways, we, we did take care of that, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, everything else, I, no other comments?
Great. Thanks so much.
Everybody else happy? Everything good?
Chris, did you make that motion?
It sounded like.
Oh, yeah, I made the motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six budget.
I'll support.
Would we be able to change, I just noticed this, um, would we be able to change in the packet to have it labeled approval of the twenty-twenty-six budget instead of twenty-twenty-five?
It's, it's, it's right on the agenda.
It's right on the agenda, just.
Yeah. Some just, I mean, I know a lot of people refer to the website.
Yeah, yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, it was on the website.
Well, the amendments are twenty-twenty-five, but the budget is twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, we have a motion to support. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, perfect. Now we're gonna move to the resolution approving the program year twenty-twenty-six Community Development Block Grant.
So I would like to see us try to come up with a adjusted estimate for twenty-twenty-six construction costs, 'cause I assume it's gonna be more than the twenty-twenty-four estimate.
Not for design, of course, just the procurement of, like, uh, goods, other goods and services, right?
Yes, excellent point.
So could, could we round it to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand? 'Cause like, 'cause isn't this due, like, next week?
Should we do a not exceed?
I was thinking a not to exceed, and then let these two work out the.
For two-hundred-and-fifty, and it comes in under, that, that money just gets rolled over to next year, or we just don't get it?
I don't think they'll just let us ask for more than we can support.
We'll have to figure that out. This is the first year they've done it based on project costs, so they may ask us to roll over any difference, or they may just roll it into the county budget and reallocate on their own.
That was actually, I guess, another question I had in terms of, like, is it a all or nothing? Do, had they said, like, if, if we say, hey, we have this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, either we get it all, or we get nothing, or will they possibly come back and say, we'll give you one-fifty towards that project? And do they factor in anything of, like, a cost share if we say, oh, we're gonna, it's this expensive, we're covering this part, we're only asking you for that? I don't know if they got that far into it, or if this is just the first time they're doing it, and they don't really know, or they haven't said yet.
They may have an idea, but my understanding right now is it's a yes or no. If, if they look at it and say, well, we'd be interested in cost sharing, I'll absolutely bring that back to the township and we can figure out.
'Cause I, I mean, I'd rather take something than nothing if we think we're gonna do this project at some point, regardless of, if that does come up, but.
Well, and if, if we have to just use a hard, I mean, we don't, we're not giving you much time to figure this out, so if we have to use an old figure and it costs us a little bit more.
That's what I was gonna say.
We have, we have nothing right now. We're asking for basically a grant.
That's, that's true, too.
So if we've gotta come up with ten or fifteen thousand, we've already put money aside for CDBG, CDBG-type stuff in the budget. We're still way ahead. And this is gonna be interesting, 'cause we're getting potentially access to more funds than previous by far.
Oh, yes.
But we don't know whether or not we're gonna get it, or how this will work, so it's kind of a mixed bag right now, 'cause we don't know what.
Yeah, first year.
I mean, how, how easily, how easily or quickly would it be to come up with a adjusted estimate?
I would just, I put in, like, a seven or eight percent inflation factor on both years, that's what I would do. Instead of redoing the whole estimate, unless you need it for attachment.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't, I don't think, like, we need to go through, like, complete, like, line-by-line unit cost updates, but.
Well, that sounds very reasonable, because we're talking about a twenty-four estimate and twenty-six dollars.
Right.
Twenty-twenty-six dollars, so.
If you don't have to ha, actually attach the estimate to the submittal, then I would put in inflation. If you do, when is it due to the county?
It's due Friday, the application is.
Like this Friday? Or we could still do an infla, if we have to do an estimate, what we could do is do the inflation estimate. We, I could add that to the estimate, essentially, if you wanted to do that. But typically, in my experience, if you're getting any funds, you're, there's a matching requirement. It's, but this is new.
Right, right, yeah.
So you never know. Um, so either, either way, if you wanted to add that inflation number to it, then I would make note of it and revise the estimate accordingly based on those percentages, like, straight across, get it to Brian before Friday, so it could be submitted.
Yeah. I, if, if we say eight percent, I think was one of the numbers you said, right?
Well, the inflation factor of the last few years has been about, what, six, seven, six to eight percent the last, per year? So I would say, I would say add, um, I would do probably six and a half percent per year.
Okay.
Right? And then I'll just.
Pretty close to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's, we're pretty close to two-fifty. I just don't necessarily wanna say, hey, Oakland County, we want two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, 'cause it just sounds like we made up the number.
Yeah.
Well, it is an estimate.
It should not be around number.
Right, right, exactly.
Who are you, the chairman of the board, right?
Yeah.
Two-hundred-and-fifty, sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
What was the total?
Two-hundred-and-fifty, sixty-six, eighty-eight.
Wait, two-hundred-and-fifty, sixty-six.
'Cause that's the total, so now we get.
Okay, uh, or, well, I've got, if I do eight percent, it gives us, shoot, it just went away. Sorry, I had it, I had it here.
I think she said six.
Two-fifty, ninety-two, twenty-three is eight percent off of what you listed as the estimate.
Eight percent over.